It'd probably work that way.
That ain't natural.
I'd like to call this August the 18th meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners in order. I ask Mr. Steve Johnson to present the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Father, again, we come to you about to conduct some very serious business, and some of which is of grave importance, and some of which is rather mundane. But even in the mundane matters, Father, I pray that we will be faithful stewards, and we will act responsibly, and we will act in a way according to you, for, Father, we know we will stand before you and be judged. And, Father, folks will come and speak to us tonight, and I pray that they'll be treated respectfully, and they will treat others with respect, and that there'll be good, honest discussion and debate. And that whatever said, done, or even thought here tonight will be for the honor of your son, the Lord Jesus. I pray your blessing upon us and the people of this county. We ask it in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This all stands for pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Maschman, I'll need any adjustments to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I do have two or three adjustments to the agenda. First of all, would like to add, under closed session, a matter for personnel, that would be GS 143-318.11A6, and also add an economic development item, which would be 143-318-11A4. Mr. Chairman, also would like to rearrange the agenda to bring the public comment period up to immediately following the appointments before the board. So the public comment period will be immediately following the appointments before the board. And then would like to add item L, and that would be the request from the Iredell State Full Board of Education for permission to apply for additional qualified school construction bonds, or QSCBs, for the Union Grove Elementary Career Technical Center and the Cool Springs Elementary Projects. Those are the adjustments to the agenda I have, Mr. Chair. I apologize, there was one additional item under item H, which was memo 10. In addition to the fees that are listed there, an addition of dental fees were also added. Those are the adjustments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You've heard the agendas. Are there any corrections? Have any commissioners or additions? If not, all in favor of the agendas presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. Presentation, this time for a, by Mr. David Swan, CEO of Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare Area, the 2008-09 annual report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I know you have in your materials several items from me. One is a cream-colored piece of paper with some information on it, mine's white, but it looks like that. Second item will be a budget sheet, that will be a spreadsheet, and the third item is a colored graphical display, we call it a dashboard. And the fourth item, I'll just reference, is our strategic plan, which you should have also had in your materials. So, again, it's good to see you. I'm going to be presenting some annual information that I do every year for you on all the behavioral health services in Iredell County. I'm just going to scan this first item and hit the high points because of time, and, of course, you ask me any questions that you might have. Just provide for you a six-year running track there towards the top of the appropriations from Iredell County, based on population also. You have agreed to provide $558,698 during this fiscal year, that is $3.52 per capita, based on the 2009 July 1 population for Iredell County of 158,396. You'll see the Crossroads total population, which is a three-county program, as you know, Iredell, Yadkin, and Surrey County, of 270,755. And I've provided for you last year's, that's last fiscal year's, services as far as the number of people that were served. That was 4,309, or 38.5% of the total of 11,171. That is an underrepresented number, however, because on Medicaid services, we do not have the data for substance abuse consumers, so you can add several thousand to that. You have our annual budget there in the middle of page one, the 2009-2010 annual budget. As you will see, it has been decreased, and I'll explain more about that later. And I give you the breakdown of the three major funding categories, from Medicaid services to service management funds, and to direct care funds to the citizens. What you don't have on your piece of paper, but I'll tell you, is the value last year of all the public dollars that went into mental health services. This is county dollars, state dollars, and Medicaid. It's $31,570,154. That was the value of the behavioral health services to Iredell County citizens last year. Beginning with the bottom of page one and on over on to page two, you'll just see all the services that we have, that you have here in Iredell County. I won't go through each of those again, I'll just say that they involve housing and residential services, outpatient services, clinical care, day and vocational services, crisis services, and recovery-type services. Next comes a finance summary, and that is the spreadsheet that I provided for you. This is unaudited and is effective as of the end of the fiscal year 2008, 2009, as of June 30. You will see the balances at the bottom. You will see that we did go into fund reserves at $3.6 million this past year in order to meet the needs and provide as many services as we could. And so, that, and then to give you a better explanation of that, if you'll go back to the main document, the bottom of page two again, you'll find a graph, and then on over at the top of page three, another graph. What I provided for you is a comparison from the fiscal year '07-'08 to the fiscal year '08-'09, in the services we provide grouped in five different categories. I'll just go to the bottom line. What you'll see is, in this most immediate past fiscal year, 61,071 different services were provided. And then if you turn over to the top of page three, you'll see, in the year before last, 46,673 different services were provided. That difference, or the gain, is 14,398. That is a 30% increase in the number of services provided to Iredell County citizens. You will see also below that, the services and locations, where they're located at here in Iredell County. I think you mostly know that. Many of you have heard me speak about those in the past, so I won't go into that detail. Next item is a crisis services dashboard, which, again, is a colored piece of paper that has six different graphs on it for your viewing. You'll find in the top left, county population estimates based on each of the three counties that we serve. You'll see Iredell County, with its population, represents 59% of the total population in the Crossroads area. What you can look at here, the rest of the five quadrants, is how Iredell County might compare against that population, based on the usage of different types of crisis services. So just go into the right, you'll see the state hospital admissions. So 59% of our population is in Iredell County, and Iredell County used 54% of the state hospital admissions out of our total. You'll also see the bottom, I mean, in the middle to the left, the mobile crisis referrals. Iredell County used 40% of those total calls and total referrals. Referrals to the Crisis and Recovery Center, located here in Statesville, 57% of the usage was by Iredell County citizens. And then emergency department visits in the bottom left, this is for the first and third quarters now, so doesn't really capture the fourth quarter, but 51% of the total of all the emergency department visits for a behavioral health problem were Iredell County citizens. And then referrals to other psychiatric hospitals out of the county that were related, or that were not to the state hospital, at 50%. Just while I'm talking about state hospital services, and I'll point you out to the graph at the bottom of page three, I've provided a running log here of three years comparisons of state hospital admissions for our citizens here. You will see, in Iredell County, in the '06-'07 fiscal year, 204 patients were admitted to the state hospital. Now, all of these patients would be involuntarily committed, and all of them transported by local law enforcement. And then in 2007, 2008, there was an increase to 240 admissions. And then look at this most recent past year, 144 admissions. So a drop of nearly 100 admissions to the state hospital. It's 100 fewer transports to the state hospital as well. You'll also see our total, that total admissions in the second row, going from left to right, is over the entire Crossroads area, 413 two years ago, 377 one year ago, and 268 with the most immediate past fiscal year. We're making some changes, some of it directly related to the state budget, some of it directly related to improving efficiencies and improving effectiveness at Crossroads and with our citizens. Couple of the major ones I pointed out in here, those are the consolidation of our mobile crisis services and our facility-based crisis services, which is the crisis center here in Statesville. They are going to be changing, going from one provider organization to another on September 30th this year. I've also included the benefits of this transition in bulleted form at the top of page four. This is all about efficiencies and getting an economy of scale going with this one larger provider. You'll also find in the middle of page four, highlights of our strategic plan. That produced five strategic goals. It is in the big bound document that you have. For your reference, I'll just highlight those. To anticipate and prepare for the future changes in the North Carolina system, you've been working with me a long time, and it just continues to happen. More and more changes keep coming our way, so we have to be pretty much ahead of that curve and try to work to anticipate that. We're also making extra strides to improve the effectiveness of Crossroads Crisis Response and Hospital Diversion System. Number three, to develop and enhance evidence-based resiliency and recovery-oriented practices in services for children, adolescents, and adults, and strengthen and improve the quality and effectiveness of the provider network, also here in Iredell County, and to continue to improve communication between Crossroads and our constituents, the consumers, families, providers, local public officials, and citizens. The state budget has given us quite a few changes, as I referenced just briefly. I'm going to just mention a couple of those again. What the state budget does this year is it makes two significant changes for us. First off, it legislatively reduces four services that Iredell County citizens have enjoyed for many years now. So it says that the state will then unfund those services, and bringing those down to a very, very rare and small few people that can receive that. Second thing the state budget did is it cut $40 million out of the department's budget for mental health services to be applied to programs like Crossroads. And I know some of you are avid readers of the County Commission Association's newsletter that comes out every week, especially during the General Assembly. They've been tracking on one of these parts, the $40 million part in particular, and in that $40 million, there was a push to try to force counties and local programs to put fund balance out for, in a dollar-for-dollar fashion, for any of those reductions. Last week's County Commission newsletter said that there had been some compromise to back off on heavy pressure, if you read that. I'm going to read you the statement out of the legislation that comes out of Session Law 2009-0451, that's the reference there. It says that "The department shall reduce the allocation of state funds to each local management entity," that's Crossroads, "necessary to achieve budget reductions for this purpose, and giving consideration to the LME's unrestricted fund balance and the LME's ability to supplement funding of services without impairing its financial stability." So the compromise there was a consideration of not compromising the financial stability of the local management entity, and, secondly, also giving consideration to unrestricted fund reserves, rather than all fund reserves, both restricted and unrestricted. So that was one of the differences of that. We are in the process now of putting together a plan to manage these reductions. We're going to put together a small citizen panel review, actually review panel, that will also help us and to give us information and that we can bounce ideas off of. Our board will hear some of those recommendations next week. So we are working towards managing that. Of course, time is of the essence, because every day that goes by, we have less money in order to make up for that in the end. I'll close with new and expanded services at the bottom of page four. Despite budget reductions last year and this year, there were new and expanded services here in Iredell County. I'll speak to just a couple of them. Walk-in urgent care service center for behavioral health was opened in January. That's at our Statesville office up on 21 North. Also, we had 13 Iredell County citizens who completed the Substance Abuse Advocacy Academy that was launched down in Troutman at Barium Springs Home for Children. They were kind enough to host that for us, and Commissioner Norman actually came to our launch breakfast for that, and we appreciate his presence. Thirteen people graduated from that program, and they've started their work here in Iredell County already. They're meeting tomorrow, in fact, down in the southern part of the county. They're kind of going up and down the line, and they are tackling projects to help improve the substance abuse services here in our county, so I'm real proud of them in that. We also were awarded a Sisters of Mercy grant to support a lead family partner based here in Iredell County. That lead family partner is based, actually, within one of the schools in the Iredell State Full School system, and we're real proud of that. It's our partnership that goes back a long, long way between Crossroads and the school system. Also, 20 local law enforcement officers and security officers completed the Crisis Intervention Training Project also, and have graduated, and you might have seen that in the newspaper as well. So we're quite proud of them and what that means. That means that those officers will be better prepared to manage mental health patients that are crisis-oriented when they get out in the field, when they're picking up folks. So some of them may even be in the room tonight, so real proud of that, too. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for this evening. I'll ask you to invite me to maybe respond to any questions you might want.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Is any commissioner anything to ask Mr. Swan while he's here?
Mr. Swan, as far as the state tampering with your fund balance, you think this is going to be a reoccurring problem, or you think that's over with?
Well, I am not sure that it's over with. I'm not confident of that. Here's what I believe will happen in the next two to three weeks. We're going to get a letter from the department secretary, and it's going to tell me how much money that we will be taking, or that will be taken from our allocation from the state, and they're going to make some determination of how much money we should put up in fund balance, if any, based on that language that I just gave you. I do not know how they're going to play that, because that just came out in the last week and a half, but I know that there was a lot of pressure for them to try to take fund reserves from counties and from local programs. And as you can see, we spent a considerable amount of fund reserves last year in order to provide services. That's where that growth came from. But it's, it is going to be a surprise to me, I think, if they don't talk about fund reserves and don't try to get some commitment out of most of those local management programs.
How's your fund balance now as a percentage of budget, do you think?
I can't say that I know right now, because of how much we just spent, and our auditors are in the building this week, so I don't have that information, but certainly it's gone down quite a bit. I don't think it's below the minimum that we have to have, but it is within that safe range, which is eight to 15%, but it would just be hard for me to guess tonight.
Do you have the option to reduce the level of services, or are the services you provide going to be mandated, and you just got to cough up the money?
We have an option to reduce the services, or also to find extra efficiencies, which is some of our strategy. So we might be able to provide services to the same number of people, but in different contexts and different combinations, and maybe with different interventions in order to make it costless.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
This time we have a presentation from Dennis Cleary with the Iredell County Independent Celebration Parade Committee about the recent events and discussions about the use of the fairgrounds.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, Mr. Maschman. Appreciate you letting me come tonight. The parade, each of you have been part of the parade. You know how it's grown. We had people this year from four surrounding states in the parade this year. I want to thank you for your funding. A lot of people don't realize that it costs money to put on a parade. Go buy some advertising, you'll find out how expensive it is. Go get some floats, you'll find out. But I think that we have created something in the county that people are proud of. They start asking me in January, what's the theme of the parade this year? I went to the doctor last week, and this lady says, aren't you the guy in charge of the parade? I said, yes, ma'am. She says, it's great. So we're reaching the people in the county, and I think it's well worthwhile. We have had a slight problem. The last two years, we have started the parade at the fairgrounds. We got there this Friday. We set up on Fridays for the Saturday morning parade. Well, we got there, and we didn't know it, but the exhibit hall was locked. We couldn't get to the stables. The trashcans were locked behind the gate, we couldn't get to. Now, I've got 900 people sitting out there in the fairgrounds, children, women. It's 94 degrees. I need that exhibit hall with the fans to get those people out of the heat. I need those stables for the animals, and I certainly need those trashcans. We leave the fairgrounds in much better shape and cleaner than it was when we got there. We take pride in that. I realize that the Kiwanis Club leases the fairgrounds, and they are probably the most outstanding civic organization in the county, take nothing away from them. But this parade is a county function. It is funded by the county. It is for the people of this county. I don't need a headache Friday at 12 o'clock, finding out that I can't get into the buildings that I need to get into. I'm asking you to handle that problem for me and the committee. We start working in February on this parade. It's a great committee in this county, very small committee. This year I had 12 people. It takes a lot of work, and we don't want to get there and have these problems in the future, and I'm asking for your help. Any questions?
Have any questions, Dennis? I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you out.
I'd like to thank you for what you do. I know that's a hard job down there. Several years I've been going down there, and I see how hard you work, and I appreciate so much what you do for the citizens of the county and outlying areas as well, so I appreciate what you all are doing down there.
It's an honor, sir. Thank you. Presentation from, presentation from Troutman manager David Sullaby regarding the town's request for a North Carolina Department of Transportation to establish a no-parking area on the southbound ramp leading from US 21 to I-77. Is David here?
Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen either David or the mayor here, so either there's been some confusion on the time or some complication. I have talked to Tracy. I think Tracy has talked to them and is in position to present their request for them if you need additional information, but...
Tracy, why don't you present to us then?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff received a letter from the town of Troutman, from Mayor Richardson, requesting the Board of Commissioners' write to the Department of Transportation regarding establishing a no-parking zone on the southbound ramp of I-77 from US 21. The problem, apparently, is during inclement weather, rainy weather, mud gets up on the ramp and on the highway, causes a safety problem, and they're asking that the county support them in their efforts to establish a no-parking zone in that area. And they've also stated that their police department is willing to help enforce that no-parking zone if the Department of Transportation was to establish it. That's all the information I have.
What do they require from us?
I believe they'd like a letter of support written to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
Is there motion to that effect?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Can maybe we write a letter to the DOT with this request? Any other discussion? No? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries. This next presentation is from Mike Overcash and others residing in the Elmwood community in regard to the 2030 Horizon Plan. Now, we're going to do this this manner. Mr. Overcash has called and asked me to place on the agenda. He asked for his 15 minutes, which is required. We can give him 15 minutes. He can divide that 15 minutes up any way he wants to. In addition, this is our normal session where we allow public comments from the public. You can talk about anything you want to, except you don't want to talk about the commissioners.[1711.11][1711.11](LAUGHTER). But you can say what you want to, but you're allowed three minutes to say what you want to say about, on any issue. So if there are others who want to speak on what Mr. Overcash or others are wanting to speak about, they will be allowed to do that as long as they sign up.
We did not sign up, so we'll just ask them to line up when it's time.
You'll need to line up over behind the podium and state your name at that time. Now, we're going to shift this from the end of the meeting to directly after Mr. Overcash speaks, so it'll be some continuity there. But remember, if you fall in the group with Mr. Overcash and those who are going to speak with him, they have a total of 15 minutes. Mr. Norman will yell at you or something when the time's up. And after that, if you want to speak, you can speak on any subject, but you only have three minutes, and he'll yell at you again. Okay? All right? This time, Mr. Overcash, Mike Overcash.
Okay, we're here on the 2030 Horizon Plan, and we have three speakers who want to speak to y'all tonight, and we'll start off with Michael Murphy. And we'll start off with Michael Murphy.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you here today. My name is Michael Murphy and I come to you on behalf of the citizens of the Elmwood and surrounding communities to say that we want no part of the Elmwood Quarry property, parcel numbers 478-307-3631, parcel number 477-377-2654, parcel number 477-385-2864, to be included in the future industrial expansion area along the Highway 70 corridor as designated in the 2030 Horizon Plan. We are concerned about plans by the Boggs Group to reopen the quarry and to include an asphalt manufacturing facility on site. We believe the air, noise, and seismic pollution that would make the surrounding area unsuitable for future residential growth, especially given the fact that these industries are often now required to operate 24 hours a day to suit state road projects. People won't want to buy homes in an area with an asphalt plant and quarry located nearby, but they will have a choice. Existing residents like myself won't have a choice. What do I do when my property value decreases and my investment slips away? Boggs says that they can be a good neighbor, but they tout as a key bonus that we have a low residential community. We have no schools nearby. And I don't quite understand this because if you want to be a good neighbor, then I don't see the problem with having high density residential nearby. Being a bad neighbor to a small number of people isn't equivalent to being a good neighbor. And what about the hidden costs that we have? Structural damage to homes and wells, often these little things that are left behind to business and churches can be costly to business and churches. And often, industries such as these hide behind the veil of doubt and refuse to take responsibility for the damage they cause. Homeowners who turn to their insurance companies run the risk of having their claims denied for repairs and their homeowner's insurance canceled just for being close to a blasting area. A quarry and asphalt plant will also deter desirable industries from locating in the area. Asphalt plants and quarries typically employ tens of people, not hundreds, not thousands. So there won't be a positive employment impact and it would drive away skilled jobs that these other industries can bring with them. And they don't want to be next to an asphalt plant and quarry. It's not good for business. And with the number of asphalt plants being constructed in the area, and there's one just recently been permitted, why does it make sense to include one of these in our rural community? There are already nine quarries in the 30-mile radius. Doesn't make sense to force industrial growth in our area, given all the vacant spaces and areas already designated as industrial space. Boggs is going to paint you a pretty picture about their community involvement, their clean working environment, their beautiful entrance landscaping, and how good of a neighbor they're going to be. But if you peel back the coverings, all you have is a polluting asphalt plant and quarry. And that's all it is. Thank you very much.
You've got 11 minutes to go.
11 minutes?
Yes.
Thank y'all for letting us speak. We are Mike and Melissa Neder. We are homeowners in the Elmwood community. We've only been out there a couple of years. We are probably within 500 yards of the proposed quarry asphalt plant, if you will. And we are here in favor of the 2030 plan. So Melissa has some facts she would like to talk about.
I'll be straight with you, considering the time. Asphalt companies and active quarries are heavy industry. They cannot make suitable neighbors for farmers. There are controls and limitations on pollutants. No matter how you try, you cannot collect 100 percent of emissions from any type of pollutant. You have guidelines and acceptable amounts set aside in areas that are made for this, not next to farmland. Quarries, when they disrupt the groundwater, it can stop the flow to the well of these farmers. We've got chicken farmers out there that require about 3,800 gallons of water per day. Okay? One mile radius of this proposed site has over 1,000, no, I'm sorry, 110,000 chickens. Okay? We've got over 5,600 head of cattle. Dust, you can't contain dust 100 percent. You can wet it down, you can hold it down, but you can't control it every day. Dust travels, it lands on vegetation. The cows eat that vegetation. It passes through. Once again, you've got controls on these, but not 100 percent. They're acceptable levels. There have been air studies done. Everyone knows asphalt is full of contaminants. Okay? There are seven toxins that are known of. They pass through air, they pass through water, pass through all different directions. You cannot have it this close, not next door. It's just not suitable. If that were to be allowed into our community, that would just destroy the agriculture base of our economy, of our farmers, detrimental to the families, and beyond repair. Once those resources are gone, that's it, they're gone. There is no replacing them. You might get a fix for a while, sure make a little money off that, but it is not a long-term plan. It's just not in favor of it. And what the community is asking of you tonight is we want no part, no part of the aforementioned, well, Michael listed, those numbers. We want no part of any of those parcels included in the industrial node. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight, for your consideration of this matter, and for your service to our community.
Would you state your name, please?
My name is Krista Bass. My family lives on property that borders all three of these parcels in concern. I moved here in 1997 from Charlotte with my husband and two sons. And we didn't move here because we had family here. We didn't move here because our jobs brought us here. We moved here because we love the community and because we wanted to make an investment in a place where our kids can grow up, in an Elmwood-type community. Since that time, eight more of our family members have joined us in four separate households. So needless to say, we have a lot invested in this community. We believe that the rock quarry and the asphalt plant that the Boggs Group is asking you to include in the 2030 plan would negatively impact Elmwood and the lives of all of its inhabitants, humans, animals, and plants. Boggs will show you pretty pictures and tell you that most of the eastern portion of the site in question would be 100 percent undisturbed. But for obvious reasons, they don't speak of the part that they will disturb, which consists of a gaping hole in the earth that's subjected to systematic destruction via explosives. And that's just the quarry part of their proposed operation. There's also asphalt and trucks and concrete and more trucks and rock crushers and all sorts of other offensives that will continue 24/7 ad nauseam for the current residents. They want to put a seismograph at the nearest home. As the crow flies, I'm not sure which of us would be the recipient of that honor, but I don't want a seismograph. And my neighbors don't want a seismograph. Nearby residents will experience a significant loss of property value. There's risk to the water that feeds our farms and our families, potential damage to the property from seismic activity, disturbances to the wildlife, impacts to farming, traffic issues, impacts to infrastructure and services, and the list continues. These nuisances and hazards could make life in Elmwood completely unbearable. We also believe that the presence of such a facility in our community would have a distinctly negative economic impact in the form of inhibited residential and other industrial growth. The facility would not create a large number of jobs for the amount of land that they're going to consume. And there's opportunity costs that's hidden there because if they're there, other industries that are employing more people will not be there. We are not opposed to growth. We support efforts to increase the tax base. But the commercial node along Highway 70 that's laid out in the 2030 plan is already quite large in comparison to the others. And to increase it, especially with this type of usage, would contradict other intents of the plan. A key theme of the plan is making the preservation of agriculture and rural character a priority. The current draft of the plan designates most of the property in question as either low-density residential or rural conservation. Here are some excerpts from the plan that speak to those designations. Low-density, the intent of these lands is to provide a transition in intensity. Rural conservation, the intent of this classification is to ensure that the development of higher intensity land uses do not create a negative impact on working lands. Those are direct quotes from the plan itself. We believe this change would be contrary to both of those. As you well know, the Horizon Plan has been in the works since at least 2007, with foundational work being done even before that. There were hired consultants, steering and technical committees, and people who know Elmwood intimately at the table while it was being developed. It's been published to the public and it was reviewed in multiple public forums. To make a change of this magnitude at this point would seem to marginalize and devalue the hard work and experience and expertise required to develop that plan and to execute the process. In addition, the plan says, and I quote, "roadways, school facilities, utility plans, environmental conditions, floodplains, and other public facilities and needs for services all need consideration and coordination and preparation of a comprehensive plan." We believe there is significant risk of unintended consequences in implementing this sort of change without the proper due diligence across multiple disciplines and entities. So some of my neighbors join me here. You guys stand up with me. These people are here to show their concern and because of their true dedication to the best interests of our community. We are here to ask you to keep these three parcels of land that Michael mentioned earlier out of the Highway 70 commercial node in the 2030 plan. We are here to ask you to make a decision on our behalf tonight to resolve this issue in accordance with our wishes. Will you do it? Thank you.
Mr. Overcash, you've got two minutes to wrap up.
I think you're pretty well covered at all.
Okay, all right.
Can I say something here with the chairman?
Not right now. All right, we're now going into the public comments period. If you have something to say on any issue, line up here behind the podium. You will be given three minutes. Okay, state your name.
My name is Ted Nellis. I live at 130 Rockin' Inn Lane. I hope each of you received my email. I grew up in this community. Please, leave it alone. Please. Thank you.
My name's Sarah Nessler. I don't live in this community, but I have some questions in general about the 2030 plan. First of all, I'd like to know how much it cost me and everybody else in this room to pay for this plan. Secondly, I'd like to know if it is a better plan than the existing land use plan that's already in effect. Why is it better? And what makes it better? And my third question would be, would the steps that are currently used for rezoning continue to be used? For example, notification of the request of rezoning? The opportunity to speak at the planning meetings and in front of the commissioners to voice an opinion for and against, for or against, a proposed zoning change? And I wasn't able to find specific information. Everything that on the county site seemed to be pretty general, but a gentleman told me that there is more specifics. I just am interested in information as far as this plan for the whole community versus one neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Mashburn, would you get the information, the latest requests and get her that?
Mr. Smith's going to get with her and find out contact information so we can get that information to her.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tricia Wright. And first of all, I was not meant to be a public speaker, so y'all just bear with me. But my husband and I moved out to Elmwood a little less than four years ago. And we moved out there because of the community and because of the schools. Everybody you talk to that has kids want to go to Elmwood, you know, want to go to Elmwood community for Cold Spring School because it's wonderful. I don't know most of these people here and, you know, hopefully over the years I will get to know them. But we have a little boy in school now and one coming up that will be in school. And, you know, I just hope that y'all all listen really good to everybody and take into consideration if it was your family, that, you know, I don't think you would want this either. And hopefully you'll see it our way. Thank you.
My name is Bill Stacy. I live at 156 Primrose Lane, which is off New Salem Road. I came here 30 years ago and purchased property in that area. And a big reason in buying this property, I had about 1,100 feet that fronts on Fourth Creek. And I felt all along that Fourth Creek is an underappreciated resource for this area. I think in the future, a Fourth Creek corridor for what's been mentioned here for conservancy, for farming, and other recreational-type uses will become more and more important. Now, anything affecting the quality of Fourth Creek, either upstream or downstream, I think would negatively affect any portion of any property along Fourth Creek. So in a nutshell, I'm promoting the idea that Fourth Creek is a critical resource that we need to preserve and improve for my grandkids. Thank you.
My name is Steve Benfield. I live on Berry Oak Road. I asked Steve Johnson, I told him I was going to build a senior citizen park. I asked Johnson, did I need a permit to put the building up? And he said, no. I explained what we're going to have. We're going to have music, singing, and dancing. So they stayed up about, I put the post up, they stayed up about 11 months. And then I put the rafters up. The county was messing with me. They seen all these posts up for 14 months. They didn't stop and ask me whether I was going to do anything. I got 90 percent finished. One Friday afternoon at 4:30, here come a guy. He said, you got a permit? I said, no, sir. I asked Mr. Johnson, he said I didn't need one. He said, well, you're going to have to quit right now. We'll put a thing here on the post and you're going to have to quit. So my wife's gone to the beach. So she come in Monday and we went up there Tuesday. They said your building's too big. And I said, well, it's not too big for me. They said you're going to have to tear a part of it down. And I said, listen, I ain't tearing none of it down and ain't nobody else. Well, if you're our architect, you can leave it up. They told me which architect, the heart. I went and hired him. He said you put another two before wherever you got a two before. I ordered another 452 before's. I said you're going to have too much weight up in there. I said, "You're gonna have too much weight up in there." "Oh, no, not gonna have too much weight."
Mr. Benfield, you've got one minute to wrap up.
I know who designed this rafters. I had 20,000 nails, 6,000 screws. They come out in a little snow, and it collapsed. Now, the reason I'm putting this out, all these people standing out here, they don't know why my building comes down. But the post, the six-by-six post, boom. And I had to put 16 channel iron to pour the post back there. Now they tell me you're gonna have to hire another engineer. Well, there's three buildings within 500 feet of mine. They've been there 35 years, and they're up. They have one two before. Mine had three, and mine's down, and theirs is up. So from what I think, this county don't know, they've got some people hired-
Mr. Benfield, you're out of time.
That they don't know what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Benfield.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, committee, I'm Mike Bennett from Circle L Ranch over in Elmwood Community. And my father-in-law and myself, we moved here some 31 years ago and bought the Old Owens Dairy Farm. And since that time, we've made improvements there, and the community has joined us, and we provide, we've got farmland, and we've got horses on the trail. We've got a barn there that has a cowboy church in it now, which they have anywhere from 40 to 60, and it has as many as 90 people at the cowboy church. And what we've done there in our community, we've created a place that kids could come. They come after school and ride horses. They got a safe place to go. It's a family atmosphere, and we want to keep it that way. And that's really, there's a lot of people in this room right now that know about Circle L Ranch and the Elmwood Community from years past. And that's what we want to keep in our community is agricultural. We actually, my father-in-law and I, we actually had some cows on the old rock quarry property. We had them there for a few years. And there's a big hole in the ground. I don't know whether any of you gentlemen have been over there, but a lot of times when a rock quarry comes in, and this is evidence of it, there's a hole in the ground, and it's full of water, and it stays that way. And I'm just afraid of, if we increase that hole in the ground and asphalt and truck traffic, just like what they're saying, you know, that's gonna drive a lot of young families that's coming into Iredell County from other places. And I think we need to keep our community as a family atmosphere and have people want to come and live in our community. And I thank you.
Would you please raise your hand? How many others want to speak? I don't want to deny anybody the opportunity, so if you want to speak, go to the podium right now. Okay?
My name's Mike Valentine, and I live out off of Mills Garden Road. And I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I think that, you gentlemen, I appreciate you for allowing us to come and speak to you. And we get into this process, I'd just like for you guys to be aware of what my impressions were of the type people we're gonna be dealing with. We were called outside to meet with the folks from the Boggs Group, and Mr. Boggs was there. One of the guys that was talking with him there asked him, said, "What is in this for us? What is in this for me? What is in this for my community?" His answer to this guy was, "There's absolutely nothing in this unless you own stock in my company." I think that settles the whole thing right there. That's what we're dealing with. Unless you own stock in his company, there's nothing in it for you. Therefore, I ask you guys, deny them their request, whether it be for the 2030 plan or whether it be for rezoning or whatever we get into in this process, because there's nothing in it for the citizens of Iredell County. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Russell Brown, and I work in Rock Hill, South Carolina, where Boggs has a plant. And I went there Monday to see for myself, you know, what kind of neighbor they're gonna be, and I don't know what kind of brochure they put out, but I'm in the construction business. There's absolutely no sediment control, no erosion control. They have piles of asphalt laying all around the exterior of their property, a 100-foot-high pile of used asphalt that has no berms, no control whatsoever for water runoff. We have those pictures, and we didn't have them in time to present them, but I don't know what kind of presentation they gave you, but you may want to take a look at their existing sites before you would allow them to change that zoning on that plan.
I believe that completes the comment period. This time, administrative matters. I'm turning this over to Mr. Mashburn.
Mr. Chairman, can the floor open for the commissioner to say anything?
If you get on the public comment.
I'll be glad to do that if that's what I need to do.
It'll hold you down to three minutes.
Call the Guinness World Records. This is gonna be a first. Start the clock, Mr. Norman. Look, this is not a rezoning request. I've expressed this to these folks, and I think they fully understand that. But if it were a rezoning request before us tonight, it would be a rezoning request from residential-agricultural property to commercial or industrial property or heavy manufacturing. In relation to the designated land as it is now, if this were a rezoning request, it would require two motions. It would require an amendment to the land use plan, and it would require a motion for And I have every reason to believe that this would be a conditional use zoning whereby we would be somewhat of a, more of a judicial body than a legislative body. If these parcels were included in the 2030 plan, then a motion for rezoning would only require one motion. It would not require an amendment to the land use plan. It would only require a motion for rezoning. A change from the least intrusive and the least aggressive zoning classification, such as residential or agricultural, to arguably the most intensive and the most aggressive type of zoning in the county should be a process that requires as much deliberation as possible. And I'm not sure that a straightforward rezoning case that would not require an amendment to the land use plan affords the opportunity for adequate debate and deliberation. I know that these, if we take no action tonight, then, and we take no action in the future as far as the amendment of this commercial note, then those three parcels are not contained in it. And I would be content with that, but we did have a specific request made of Mr. Smith to the Planning Department in which he was asked to include these three parcels in this commercial note. And since we got that request in writing, I, Mr. Chairman, I think that I'm well within rights as a commissioner and we as a board that we should direct Mr. Smith to respond in writing. That at this point, it is not the desire of this board to include these three parcels in the commercial note. Now, let's be sure about this. This does not preclude the petitioner from rezoning in the future. It does not deny him rights to use his property. He has the right to petition at any point in time that he chooses. But it would afford these folks the opportunity to make an argument, and it would afford this board an opportunity for further time of deliberation. So for that reason, I would like to offer a motion that we instruct Mr. Smith to craft a letter responding to the Boggs Group that the Board of County Commissioners have no interest in designating this property for commercial use at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I may be able to improve on his motion if you'll allow me to speak for a second.
Certainly.
I talked to him about this, and I think Mr. Robertson and Mr. Norman, and for entirely separate reasons that have nothing to do with the matter that we're talking about right now in Elmwood, I've let it be known for several months that I have problems with the plan. And it's highly likely that I'm still gonna be unsatisfied when Mr. Smith finishes making his changes that were ordered by Mr. Johnson and myself and Mr. Robertson. I believe it's within our rules of procedure to break a motion into separate parts when it seems that those two parts are entirely separate subjects. And so I would like to make a motion that we approve the part of the plan that is the map, the mapping part of the plan. In other words, the part that would say that what we're doing here in Elmwood is staying as it is, as well as everywhere else, because I had no objection to the map, and I don't believe anybody else here did in the briefing session earlier. And then we can vote separately on the remainder of the Horizon Plan, because I don't want there to be any mistake about why I'm voting against the Horizon Plan. It has nothing to do with this Elmwood situation.
Mr. Chairman, we need some clarification over here. I was not understanding that the motion was on the 2030 plan, but the motion was merely to ask the Planning Director to respond in writing to the request that he has received. I'm not sure we're prepared to present all of the items that were recommended for changes to the Horizon Plan.
No, and that's why I'm saying, I'd like to break the Horizon Plan into two separate pieces, one regarding the map and one regarding everything else, because as you know, a lot of the wording in the Horizon Plan I took issue with, but the map I do not. And I think these people would like to hear a vote on the map tonight, and I think we're prepared to vote on the map tonight.
I don't, I would rather we deal specifically with this subject. There may be other instances in regard to the map where the amendment of a commercial note may be beneficial to the citizens of that community, the property owner, and of detriment to no one. And if we adopt the plan tonight, it may preclude someone in some other community may deny them that opportunity.
This is where I was going downstairs. I felt like we all go away here tonight with something. But with all the amendments and the deletions and the rewordings we've made to the, to the plan itself, I do feel like we should put off voting on the plan until we get the proper wording and have everything in front of us. So I could agree with Mr. Johnson in order to give something to these people that came here tonight so they won't go away thinking, well, they didn't do anything. We ought to, we ought to at least make a decision if we want, we want to go that far enough.
That's as far as I'm willing to go tonight.
Yeah, I think that's a good, just so you know, I mean, the plan is 97 pages in a three-ring binder, and it contains more information about things that you'll never think about again, probably.
And it's not like the health care plan. We have read it.
It's pretty close. Pretty close.
So, so my point being is the fact that we were never, it was never, it was, it's not even on the agenda to vote the plan up or down, okay? So, and I think that's, everybody's concern is that, is that maybe if you don't see us vote on something, that we're somehow ducking the issue. I interpret the letter that Mr. Johnson has proposed, I mean, that certainly, I think, sends the message and telegraphs the punch, pretty much. So let's write the letter, and I- And then let the process flow the way it's originally scheduled to go.
The second reason I would like to write the letter, and I'd really appreciate a 5-0 vote on this, but I'm not gonna fall out with anybody. But they're gonna pick a, Jim from the State's Landmark was there, and he listened to the amendments throughout that long process we had this afternoon. And I was fearful that if we take no action in this meeting and these folks pick up the paper tomorrow and they say, "Mr. Robertson offered 22 amendments, and Mr. Johnson offered 24 amendments, and Mr. Caddell..." We lost count. And then they're gonna think, "Well, they told us that we were gonna, they weren't gonna include these three parcels, and now they got all these amendments." I thought they would leave here with a misunderstanding, and I want these folks to have a clear understanding of what we're here, what we did here tonight, and that we have no desire at this point in time to include these three parcels in the commercial note at Elmwood and Highway 70 Eastern.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a point of order in the motion. Mr. Johnson made, we vote on it?
Any other comments? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, the following items are on administrative matters, and you-
Before everybody does the Mass Exodus, y'all said you had some photographs. Whoever has those, if you'll hang back, I'd appreciate it. Okay, sorry, Mr. Mashburn.
Item A, request approval of the 2009 refunds and releases. Item B, request for approval of budget amendment number five to appropriate ratings improvement funds to the Ebenezer Fire Department for the cost of sealed building plans for station expansion. Item C, approval of budget amendment number six. Item D, approval of budget amendment number seven. Item E, approval of budget amendment for accepting $66,472. Item E, approval of a budget amendment for acceptance of $66,472 school-based influenza vaccination program. Item F, approval to accept $60,000 in emergency preparingness funds from the North Carolina Public Health Office for the pandemic flu planning. Item G, approval to apply for a North Carolina March of Dimes grant. Item H, request for the Health Department for approval of a current procedural terminology code and new fee code for, and including dental fees. Item I, request for designation of Finance Director Susan Blumstein as the Debt Setoff Hearing Officer, and approval of an amended resolution pertaining to the North Carolina debt set-off program. Item J, approval to continue an existing contract between Iredell County and the Kiwanis Club for one year. Item K was not put on consent agenda. Item L was an addition, and that was approval of a resolution in support of the Iowa State for Schools' request for additional qualified school construction bonds. Mr. Chairman, those are the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Request for approval of the August 4th, 2009 minutes- Request for approval of the August 4th, 2009 minutes.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. The bond was on consent, right?
Say again?
The bond was on consent, right?
That is correct.
Okay. You go ahead with the announcements and vacancies and such, please.
The appointments to the boards and commissions, well, you have no vacancies to announce. And so the appointments to the boards and commissions, Adult Home Care Community Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Motion to table.
Motion's to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Animal Grievance Committee, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Mr. Keith Lautermeier.
Why didn't we do Barbara Lippert?
Yeah, I know. I was asleep, I'm sorry.
On the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Barbara Lippert said that she was willing to serve another term.
Okay.
And we do it. Yeah. We just blew right by her, I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, well, who's, who's up now?
I've made a motion.
Keith Lautermeier on Animal Grievance Committee.
Yes, sir.
Any other nominations?
I move we close the floor of nominations and appoint Mr. Lautermeier by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Animal Care Home Committee Advisory Committee? Was that not one that you said that you had?
The Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee. Yeah, Barbara Lippert.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none. I move nomination be closed and accept her by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. 2010 Census Complete Count Committee, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Okay.
Ms. Marsha Fruhon.
Ms. Marsha Fruhon, any others?
And I don't have her contact information. I think she's on another committee now, Madam Per.
She is, sir.
If you need any further information, call me, I have it at store.
Bobby Stone. Would you like to serve on that committee?
What would be involved?
Accounting people?
That's it?
I don't know, I'm not sure what.
Just taking up a seat that Acorn can't get into.
It's, it's more or less an information committee. Okay?
There you go. There you commit. Strong arm them right in.
Was I too frank?
Dash for the door here, can't do that much more.
Bobby Stone. Thank you. Okay. All in favor of those two, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Fire Department Plan Committee, one appointment.
Yeah, I'd nominate Mr. Lynn Niblock.
Lynn Niblock been nominated. Any others? Hearing none, all. I move nomination be closed and accept Mr. Niblock by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business. New business. County Manager's Report.
No report other than the activity report that's placed before you, Mr. Chair.
We're just going to give you a minute anyway, so don't worry about it. You get on to have a minute anyway. Okay, thank you. We now have some closed sessions. GS 143 318 11 dash A, or A, property acquisition. GS 143 318 11 dash six personnel, and I'm not sure what the other one was. Economic Development, but I'm not sure what the dash number is. Dash one?
It's four.
Four. Okay, 143 318 11 A dash four. All in favor moving in closed session, say aye.
Aye.